Order. And this meeting has been recorded. Um. Councilwoman Jones, could you do the invocation, please? We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Our hearts and minds will look towards the Lord. We thank you, Father, so much for this day that you blessed us and allowed us to see. We thank you for all of the blessings and the joy that you have bestowed on us. We thank you for your generosity and all abounding love. We pray that you send your Holy Spirit to guide us in the undertakings of this meeting. May your divine guidance help us to decide correctly on the vital things we must decide on based on your command. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we know we have our own agenda, but we ask that the Holy Spirit would lead and direct us in all discussions that take place during this regular meeting. I pray that you would use the skills and abilities within each of us to accomplish the tasks set before us. Help us to remain positive in all decisions made and always remember that all things are possible through Christ Jesus who strengthens us. We ask this prayer in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Um. Before we start, I wanted to just make an announcement that Councilman Curtis is currently serving as the acting mayor in the absence of the Mayor Cross. Um. Council Clerk Lewis, could you do the vote call, please?
Sure thing. Hello, everyone. Councilwoman Jones?
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Guillaume?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Faree?
Here.
Thanks. Uh, but we have Vice President Ferguson here, but we have a call.
Thank you. Um. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, yes. Uh, oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, no, I don't. I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
Acting President, I just didn't pretend to the agenda, but I'm under the weather, so my voice is a little off.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry, you're not feeling well. Um. Okay, uh, Council Clerk, uh, could you please take a vote to accept the agenda?
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faree?
Yes.
President Ferguson?
Yes.
Thank you. This is passed. We have six.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation. Um, the CPA audit summary of the, um, they available?
Uh, yes. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. Okay, you, uh. You may start the presentation.
All right. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Dejonnet, um, manager with Wire, Conan and Sora, uh, auditors for the city of Plenard, and I am here to provide a brief presentation for the city's audited financial statements um, as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2021. Um, I'm pleased to report that for the year ended June 30th, 2021, we did offer a clean or unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance as auditors we are able to provide to the city. The city's financial statements are broken down into a couple of different sections. The first section is known as management discussion and analysis, and this is a very broad overview of those financial statements. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, but, um, it does provide some good highlights and overview um, for you to read at your leisure. After the management discussion and analysis, the um, city's financial statements begin with the statement of net position or what is also known as your balance sheet, and this is as of the end of your previous fiscal year, June 30th, 2021. And this presents all of the assets, all of the liabilities, and then the remaining net position of the city as of that date. So as of June 30th, 2021, um, the city had total assets of 11,189,294. These are divided between the general governmental activities and then, um, the business type activities, which is the gold room of the city. And the majority of those assets are, um, within those governmental activities. Of those assets, they are split between current assets of 8,93,090 and then another 3,96,000, which is the capital assets of the city. So your land, your building, equipment, et cetera. Um, below the assets, the city then does have some liabilities, um, not a very significant amount, 684,000, um, largely comprised of ongoing, um, accounts payable and other accrued payroll and expenses that were due as of the end of the year. So that leaves the city with a net position of 10,504,000. Um, a portion of that is your, uh, capital assets, so that cannot be spent for operations. There's another 1,581,000 of various funds the city has received that has, um, certain restrictions on how those funds can be spent. And then a remaining, um, 6,91,000 of unrestricted funds that can be used for any purpose that the city should need. During the year June 30th, 2021, um, governmental activities spent 4,103,000. A portion of that was, um, funded through charges for service and operating grants of, um, just a little over a million. And then, um, general revenues of governmental activities of 4.1 million, which would be the taxes and other, um, um, real estate and income and other taxes of the city largely. The gold room activities, um, cost the city 103,000 to operate, and unfortunately, due to the ongoing pandemic, was not able to really bring in any income. So overall, for the year, the city as a whole had a positive change in net position of 1.1 million. However, the gold room did, um, have that loss of 102,000. And again, this does leave the city with an ending net position of, uh, 10,504,000. We also present, um, a second balance sheet for what we call, um, governmental funds, which is split between the general operating fund, some special revenue funds, and then a capital projects fund of the city. These statements are presented on a shorter term focus, so they do not include, um, long-term capital assets or any long-term obligations of the city. So on a shorter term focus, in just the governmental activities, the city has total assets of 9,204,000. Um, for short term, short-term liabilities, the city has approximately 756,000, again, largely in, um, accounts payable and other ongoing, um, accrued payroll type expenses. Um, total fund balance across those funds, um, 7,419,000. Again, a portion of that, um, 1,581, has been received with certain use restrictions on it, but the remaining 5,832 is unassigned or otherwise available for spending at the city's, um, need. We present a second income statement, also on a similar shorter term focus, total revenues of governmental funds, 5,271,000, and then total expenditures of governmental funds, which includes, um, things such as capital outlays, 4,216, which gave the city an overall positive change, revenues exceeding expenditures of 1,055,000. The, um, again, the gold room, a separate proprietary fund statement is presented, showing very similar information that you would see on the earlier statement of activities. The gold room had total assets of 564,000. However, the majority of that is the actual physical building space in the building. Um, the gold room has run up a rather large, um, balance of funding that the general operations have been supporting. So total liabilities, advances to other funds, 965,000 in its amounts that the general operations have been supporting. So this does leave the gold room in a, um, deficit of net position of 403,000. And as I mentioned previously, due to the pandemic, the gold room had very minimal, um, income for the year, $922. Um, there were still some ongoing operating, um, expenses, some salaries related to those employees, and other, um, depreciation for total operating expenses of 103. Um, and again, due to the lack of operations, the gold room, um, spent cash flows during the year of 65,000, and then some funding of 122 was passed over to the gold room to support from, um, general operations, and there was some capital improvements of just shy of 50,000. Um, the city also has a pension plan for the employees. So we do present a very short statement showing that as of June 30th, there was approximately 500,000 worth of, um, investments held for those employees. Following the, um, various financial statements are the notes to the financial statement, and these go on for, um, a number of pages, so I don't want to, uh, go too deep with these statements, but, um. Note one is the summary of significant accounting policies, which does provide, um, information on how the various, um, line items in these statements are calculated. Um, the required presentation under government accounting standards. Um, there were no major changes to this, um, policies this year, so this footnote would look very similar to what you would have seen in previous years. Um, footnote two details out that the city does have, um, significant amount of cash, um, and cash equivalents, total deposits as of June 30th, 6,817,000. Um, those funds are held in various bank accounts, and they are otherwise, um, collateralized or insured in accordance with, um, the code for municipal funds. Capital, um, assets for the year, the city did do some improvements, 383,000 of capital additions for the year in general governmental activities. Um, and then just under 50,000 for the gold room improvements. Footnote four details long-term obligations of the city. The city has a small amount of a, um, lease purchase for, um, some equipment that is, um, due to be repaid or would have been repaid through December of 2021. And then, um, the city does have, um, 96, 97,000 worth of accrued time for employees, um, unused vacation. Um, the city has some office equipment leases that are, um, ongoing for several more years. And then following all the footnotes is some additional supplementary information, presenting the general fund, the, um, city's budget for the year with the actual results compared to the budget. Um, showing that the city did not, um, over expend in any of their budget categories, in fact, was fair, very well below the budget for the year. And then a, um, similar presentation is also done for the special revenue fund. And that sort of brings me to the end of the financial statements. Um, I know that was kind of very, very high level, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, appears that there are no questions, so we do appreciate your presentation. Thank you for that.
Absolutely. You're very welcome.
You have a good evening.
All right. You too.
Okay. Okay, next we, um, have the minutes. January 25th, special regular meeting and, um, the work, uh, work session, March 7th, 2022. Um, any discussion? On the minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilwoman, uh, Faree, uh, most.
Who's second? Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, could we have a vote to accept the minutes? Um, Council Clerk, please.
Um, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Faree?
Yes.
President Ferguson?
Yes.
Okay, we have six. This is passed.
Thank you. Okay, now we have, next on the agenda is the vote for legislations, um. Council Clerk Lewis, could you read, um, oh, 01, 2022, emergency ordinance to amend Ethics Commission established policies and duties.
Sorry about that. Just wanted to share. Okay. So. Okay. Ordinance number zero, I mean, oh, one dash 2022, sponsored by James A. Herring, Councilman, session, regular session, date of introduction, Monday, uh, April 11th. This is an emergency ordinance to amend section 16-5 Ethics Commission established powers and duties. Whereas the city of Glendarden is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland and operating under Article 11E of the Constitution of Maryland and section 5-202, uh, the Annated Code of Maryland as amended. And whereas the city of Glendarden established ethic rules and regulation, and whereas section 16-5A established an ethics commission consisting of five members and states the commissioner's terms in office. And whereas the Ethics Commission's rules on ethic violations by city, uh, officials, and whereas city officials feel that to ensure no conflict of interest and the ad- adaptation of, I'm sorry, of, uh, ethic complaints, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of Glendarden, Maryland, sitting in, uh, special regular session this 11th day of April, 2022, that chapter 16, section 16-5 Ethics Commission powers, duties, powers and duties be inherent by a mandatory as follows. Section A, there is a Glendarden Ethics Commission that consists of five members appointed by the mayor or council and approved by the council for renewable two-year term. Members of the Ethics Commission may continue to serve in the position after the expiration of the term until they are removed or a successor is appointed and qualifies. Any commissioner who is elected to local, state, or federal office must resign from the Ethics Commission. Be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glendarden, Maryland, that this ordinance is and shall become effective immediately following approval by the mayor or passage by the council over the mayor's veto.
Okay. Um, any discussion?
What I think we have to do, um.
Oh, um, motion to bring the
Yes.
Resolution forth.
So moved.
Second.
Um. Point of order, um, Madam President, I just, I would just like to amend that motion to bring it as, bring it forth as an emergency ordinance.
Okay.
For the record.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you. It does state that. So noted. Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
Also, on, uh, if I'm not mistaken, line 29, it's a special regular session. This is not a special regular. This is a regular session, so the word special needs to be struck.
Thank you. Council Clerk, did you make a note?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, can we take a vote?
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faree?
Yes.
President Ferguson?
Yes.
You have six. This is passed.
Thank you.
Point of order, Madam President. That vote was to bring it to the floor as an emergency ordinance. Now we need a motion to vote on the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
So I move that we vote on ordinance 001, 2022.
So, second.
Sorry, um, Madam President, uh, is, is, do we have to have discussion or do we?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I just, um, Councilman Herring moved, and who, um, second was?
Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Faree?
Yes.
President Ferguson?
Yes.
We have six. This is passed.
Thank you. Okay, the next, uh, resolution is, um, oh, 02, 2022, and, uh, do the same procedure, and also on line 28, special needs to be deleted. So, um. We need a motion to, um, accept it as an emergency ordinance?
Madam President, I make, I move that we, uh, accept this as an emergency ordinance.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Thank you. We're gonna have to vote on, on, on the motion, right?
Yes. Bring it to the floor.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
We didn't read it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Well, I would finish the vote and then read, when you bring it on to the floor for, as a, uh, resolution, as an ordinance, then we'll read.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I believe I left off at Councilwoman Faree, uh, Vice President Ferguson, I mean, President Ferguson?
Yes.
All right, we have six. This is passed.
I, I hadn't voted, but yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Miss Faree, uh, uh, sorry. I have you all marked now. This is passed. Okay. Um, let's see. So, uh, this is ordinance 0-02-2022, an emergency ordinance to amend section 92-4 designation of gold room assistance. ordinance number oh, uh, 02-2022, sponsored by, uh, Councilman James A. Herring. This is, uh, regular session correction, and, um, the date of introduction is Monday, April the 11th, 2022. This is an emergency ordinance to amend section 92-4 designation of gold room assistance. Whereas the city of Glendarden is a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, operating under Article 11E of the Constitution of Maryland and sections 5-202 of the Annated Code of Maryland as amended. And whereas the city of Glendarden, uh, I'm sorry, whereas the Glendarden City Council designates, uh, the gold room as the enterprise zone, and whereas section 92-4 allows the City Council to designate a person to assist the city manager in the operation of the gold room. And whereas the gold room should be able to operate without interruption, and whereas the City Council feels that in order to do this, section 92-4 of the city code needs to be clarified. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of Glendarden, Maryland, sitting in corrected, uh, regular session this 11th day of April, 2022, that number one, chapter 92, section 92-4 designation of gold room assistance be in hit, be and is hereby amended to read as follows. The council may from time to time designate a person or persons to assist the city manager in the administration of the use of the operation of the gold room. The person or persons so designated shall be responsible to the city manager and serve at the pleasure of the City Council. Be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glendarden, Maryland, that this ordinance is and shall become effective immediately upon approval of the mayor or passage by the council over veto, over the mayor's veto.
Thank you. We have a, um, motion to accept this, this.
Point of order, Madam President, uh, discussion?
Discussion?
Yes. Uh, like I said, I don't want to get, uh, the gold room manager or gold room, uh, person that we've, uh, put in that place to get pigeonholed into a position where on line 20, it says assist, that should be as assistance as we discussed in the work session. Line 36 also, or persons as assistants, not assist, because that would, uh, give, um, to me, full, uh, the, uh, full, um, reign to the city manager when we have a, a person in the gold room that can, um, is almost, not almost, but is, to me, in my opinion, uh, a department head, but which has persons under her. So, um, I would like the wording to be changed as assistance on line. on line twenty and also on line thirty-six, and then line thirty-four was not read into the minutes, which says designation of goal room assistance. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, also noted, I think these were, um, mentioned in the last meeting. Anyone else have, um, discussion? Okay, Council Clerk, could you take the vote, please?
Point of order, Madam President, I don't think we took a motion to vote, so I make a, I make a motion that we accept uh, ordinance, uh, oh two, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, second. Now we can vote. Thank you all for assisting me.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Harry.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Councilwoman Free.
Yes.
President Ferguson.
Yes.
All right. This is passed. We have six.
Thank you. Next, uh, resolution is, um, R eleven, twenty twenty-two. There's a question on nine, uh, nine, that especially. Who was a special, what remaining? Okay, um, motion to bring this resolution forth.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh. Want to say something?
Yes, Councilwoman Guillaume.
Okay, is there, um, discussion? Yeah, could you read the, uh, resolution, Council Clerk?
Yeah. Okay, so, this is, uh, resolution R eleven dash two thousand twenty-two, introduced by Derek D. Curtis, the second Council President, at the request of the administration, who was the co-sponsors. The session, um, which will be corrected, it today is the regular meeting. Uh, the date of introduction was January the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a resolution to approve appointment of Captain Regis Bryant as the Chief of Police for the city of Glenada, Maryland. Whereas pursuant to section nine oh one, authority to employ personnel of the city of Glenada's charter, the Chief of Police as head of the police department shall be appointed by the mayor with approval of the council, and whereas based upon the judgment, experience, and recommendation of two career officers and a former deputy attorney general of the state of Maryland, who did conduct interviews on the twenty-sixth of October to determine Captain Regis Bryant, the candidate most ready to assume the role, and whereas the City Council wishes to appoint Captain Regis Bryant for the position of Chief of Police for the city of Glenada at the annual salary of ninety-five thousand nine hundred thirty, hundred dollars, if I said that right. Um, with said appointment to be affected upon approval of this resolution by the City Council, and whereas the City Council has determined that is appropriate to approve the appointment of Captain Regis Bryant as the Chief of Police for the city of Glenada, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glenada, sitting in regular meeting this eleventh day of April two thousand twenty-two as follows. The, the appointment of Captain Regis Bryant as Chief of Police for the city of Glenada at the annual salary of ninety-five thousand, uh, nine hundred thirty, hundred dollars, be and is hereby approved pursuant upon satisfactory background check, six-month probationary period, and the requirements to be commissioned and certified as a police officer in the state of Maryland. The Chief of Police is authorized to undertake all those powers and duties as set in the Constitution of the state of Maryland, the Constitution. I'm sorry. The Constitution of the United States of Maryland and the city charter of Glen, of the city of Glenada. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon approval by the Glenada City Council.
Okay, thank you, um. Okay, vote.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Pass.
Councilwoman Harry.
Um, my vote is no reflection on the candidate, but I'm staying.
Uh, Councilman Hairston.
Move past two.
All right. Councilwoman Gu, Guillaume.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Councilwoman Free.
Yes.
President Ferguson.
Yes.
I believe, uh, we don't have enough votes for this.
Oh, you need to go back to the past.
Okay, go back to the past, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones, please.
Okay, looks like I'm going to have to be to decide exactly for this one. But I did want to say this for the record before I voted on this, this, uh, candidate. The Glenada Police Department, in my opinion, has a lot of work that needs to be done. I am hoping that if this person is bought in as, uh, the Chief of Police, that things would be, uh, restructured, SOPs would be written, a lot of stuff that we don't, the council and the city are not aware of, such as employment practices, would be, uh, uh, revealed, that things would be ran in a way that would be, um, that would work within the city's budget and the city's monies. Uh, my first and always going to be, uh, position as far as the Glenada Police Department is concerned, I'm not saying that they're, you know, uh, not acceptable. There are some things that need to be changed. The city has, the, the city, the world has moved forward. This is twenty twenty-two, and a lot of things need to be done. Uh, but my first and always cry will be for, from citizens for citizens. As citizens want to see marked police cars patrolling our city streets. I don't want to have to wait, in fact, I don't think we have to wait, because it's already been, I think, uh, a citizen put on the Civic Association this week that there was an incident in Glenada near Johnson and Echoes Avenue where a man was accosted by four other, uh, individuals. We don't want to be like the, the lady over in Capitol Heights, for our citizens to come in and, and perps are out there waiting to, uh, uh, take what little they have. I believe, in my perception, and being around the city, walking, riding, or whatever, that when these perps see police marked, marked police cars riding through the city streets, they would might think twice about doing some of the things that they do. We don't have that at this time. We see marked police cars riding up Glenada Parkway going towards the shopping center. The businesses in the city of Glenada are not the only persons that need protection. So I'm hoping that this police chief will come in, and he will go to another municipality, because he only has DC experience. He does not have municipality experience. Would come in and get with another police chief from another municipality, from Bowie, Greenville, uh, 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 Captain Ivy over in Fairmont Heights, who have been around for a long time and working with municipalities, and, and sit down and get instruction on, um, changing the way policing is done in Prince, in, in the city of Glenada. The city of Glenada has never said that, uh, anything about, uh, uh, defunding the police. We have funded the police department, and we are funding the, the police department. The way monies are spent in the police department, those books need to be open, and things need to be changed. So I'm praying that this police chief that we are going to bring in will address those issues, and not just sit and get caught up in what Glenada, the police department is now. Things need to change, and I'm going to be standing on the rooftops, and I'm going to be taking the gloves off, and I'm going to uncover some stuff that needs to be addressed. So with that, uh, I'm, I'm going to be perfectly transparent. No, I'm not for this police chief, but I will vote yes, because we've invested too much money just to bring him on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
You're welcome.
Councilman Hairston, your, your final vote, please?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, we have five. This is passed.
Thank you. Next one, the agenda is, um, R seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Resolution to accept the American Rescue Plan funding. Motion to bring this resolution forward.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, um, this is, I'm sorry.
Any discussion? Okay, you may proceed, Council Clerk.
This is resolution R seventeen dash two thousand twenty-two. Uh, this is a resolution to accept the American Rescue Plan funding. This is introduced by Councilman, uh, James A. Herring, co-sponsored by Councilman Maurice A. Hairston. This, uh, resolution received a public hearing on Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is the regular session, and today is the date of introduction, I mean, I'm sorry, the date of introduction was Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And again, this is a resolution to accept the American Rescue Plan funding. Whereas President Joe Biden signed, uh, one point nine trillion dollar, uh, American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, to aid the public health and economic recovery from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas the ARPA funds are being distributed to the states, who is then distributing funds to municipalities. And whereas, under the rules of the American Rescue Plan Act, entities have two options when it comes to how to allocate the funding. And whereas those two options consisting of submitting a breakdown on how the municipality will spend the funding based on the Treasury Revenue Loss Formula, or opting to accept a one-time option to use the funds as lost revenue for the provision of general government services without needing to use the Treasury Revenue Loss Formula. And whereas the city of Glenada will receive four million three hundred twenty-three thousand six, I mean, three, three hundred sixty-six dollars, I mean, and seventy, seventy-six cents. And whereas the council has determined that is in the public interest that the city of Glenada will benefit from the most flexible use of the funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the city, by the City Council of Glenada, Maryland, sitting in regular session this eleventh day of April two thousand twenty-two as follows. The city of Glenada accepts the one-time option to use the funds as lost revenue for the, for the provision of general government services. Sorry, without the need to use the Treasury Revenue Loss Formula, uh, use option of the funding. That's it.
Any discussion? Okay, um, you may take the vote. Council Clerk, Lewis.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Councilwoman Free.
Yes.
President Ferguson.
Yes.
We have six. This is passed.
Thank you. And that's.
Uh, Madam President.
Yes.
Yes, one housekeeping measure. On the last piece of legislation, um, I'm sure the count was read wrong. I think, um, the clerk said it was five yeses, uh, for the police officer, I think it was actually four, two abstains.
Yeah, it was four, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think I heard five. Just wanted to.
Did, um, Councilman Hairston, did, did he abstain?
Yes.
And, um, okay.
And Councilman, um, Herring abstained.
Abstain, okay, I'm sorry.
All right.
I've corrected that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Herring. Okay. Okay. Um, next resolution, R eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Motion to bring this forth, um, resolution to establish a grant program for the city of Glenada Homeowners Association.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Council President, I do have, uh, some questions that I sent a, um, email to the makers of these, of this resolution, uh, because there were some members of the homeowners association that had, uh, concerns about receiving this funds. But in reading this resolution, again, this says that it's, um, a resolution to establish a grant program, so establishing meaning that you're going to, it's going to be set up, and then, um, hopefully, we're going to, uh, be, uh, reaching out to the presidents of each homeowners association to sit down with the council to establish this, um, grant program.
Um, Madam President, may I?
Yes, you may.
Well, let me apologize, uh, Councilwoman Jones, because I was supposed to get back to y'all on the questions, and I actually have the answers to the questions. I meant to email them to you. But, um, you're, you're correct, it's just establishing it. So what I want to do is just sit down, uh, me and Councilman Hairston are going to sit down and, and knock out some, um, some criteria and some other stuff, and then forward it to the council for review, and, you know, critique and everything else. Um, but just to answer some of your questions, and I should have sent this in an email, um, I, I did research to the attorney on this, on this, and are we allowed to do it? And they're like, it was early on in the rulings that were being handed down by the Treasury Department, and basically they were saying, yes, you can't, I mean, maybe you can give it to nonprofits, um, based on the current ruling that they had, but now with this new ruling, I'm sure it's, it's going to be a yes, and I'm going to run it through them again with the new ruling, the final, the new final ruling. Um, so they're saying, yes, because you can give money to nonprofits. Um, one of the concerns was, will the nonprofit be responsible if the federal government finds that what they use it for was not allowable? No, they will not. They will only come after the municipality. If, and we'll have to pay it back. They won't be responsible. They will not come after the, uh, the nonprofit entity. And, um, it was one other question. Oh, yeah, and the criteria, that's what, um, we're going to sit down and do, try to get that knocked out and get it to the councils, at least so we can. At least so we can have it for the next work session, so that everybody can see if we can review it and go over it and just hash everything out that we need to hash out.
So you don't see, foresee having a meeting with the presidents of the HOAs, the three, the four HOAs to see, to get their ideas concerning this?
I guess the idea that I was looking at was the money, it's a large amount of money and I'm looking at capital projects, major projects in the area that they can use it for. That's the basis, I mean, it can be used for a lot of things, but I think we need to limit it and keep it closely to what. Um, some of the criteria are for the, uh, for the original grants. Um, and that's why I'm looking at capital projects and just telling them, you know, whatever ideas they have, they, I mean, in the way of capital projects, you know. If you get it, just go for it, you know? Because I think they have a lot of different ideas and they really need to talk amongst their members if they want to do it, I mean, that's one of the criteria I would like to have is that. You know, that the, the grant be accepted by the members, not just the HOA president, that they have a, a, a vote, a public vote. On accepting a grant and what they would like to do to it, so that we can all be on board and, and, and know what's going on with the money. Um, and we can stay, all stay on the same page with everything.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Councilman Herring.
All right.
Any other, um, questions?
Yes. I do have a question, Council President. Councilman Herring. I'm not exactly sure the order in establishing this grant, I think it's a great idea. I'm wondering though, if we should define the criteria before we. Establish the grant. Or will we establish the grant and then at, at a later time have a resolution to accept the criteria?
Exactly, this is just establishing it and then we're gonna, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna bang out some criteria and I want the council to, you know, be on board and review it and everything else. And then we'll bring a resolution basically to, basically put the program in, in place.
Okay.
Of the criteria and everything else, yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you.
All right.
Council President, may I?
Yes.
Just wanna say that, I'm sorry if no one can hear me clearly.
Okay.
I just wanna say that the way that this is currently being done is the way that it should be done. Looking at outside of the council. I work with municipalities who are working with ARPA funds. And the way it usually works is you basically earmark or you put a resolution forward as to what your intentions are. And then once it's approved, behind the scenes. I'm sorry. Not behind the scenes. Once the resolution is approved, then we deal with the criterias. And also certain municipalities already have an administrator. Who would be the one basically working with those who apply for the funds. So in this case, if it's for the homeowners, then should we have, and I don't want to speak for Councilman Herring or Councilman Hairston. But one can think of. When we eventually get or should we get, I know it was stated months ago that we would probably want to get it, the administration would want to get. An administrator of the ARPA funds, then they in turn would actually. Work with the homeowner associations who apply for the funding. I hope that makes sense.
Um, yes, Councilwoman Guillaume, that's exactly right, um, once we bang out the criteria, I hope we have somebody on board that can go ahead and administer everything. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much, Councilwoman Guillaume.
Welcome.
I guess we can go ahead on and, um. Take a vote on this, uh, resolution. Council Clerk Lewis.
Um, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Oh.
Did we read?
No, we didn't, um, are we bringing, are we just bringing this to the floor?
Do you need to read it?
Okay.
This is for the vote.
Okay, so, uh, this is resolution R eighteen dash two thousand twenty-two, so resolution to establish a grant program. For the city of Glen Arden Homeowners Association. This, uh, resolution is introduced by Councilman James Herring, co-sponsored by Councilman Maurice Hairston. Public hearing date is Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the session is a regular session and the date of introduction was Monday, March fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Again, this is a resolution to establish a grant program for the city of Glen Arden Homeowners Association. Whereas Pres- President Joe Biden signed a one point nine trillion, a million, I mean. One point nine trillion American Rescue Plan Act to aid the public health and economy, economy. Recovery for the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas the ARPA funds are being distributed to the states who is then distributing the funds to municipalities. And whereas the city of Glen Arden has accepted a one-time option for use of the ARPA funds as loss of revenue. And whereas this option allows for more flexibility when it comes to addressing the city's needs. Whereas ARPA funds can be used to assist nonprofit associations and. Whereas homeowner associations, HOAs, are considered nonprofits. And whereas within the city of Glen Arden, there consist of six homeowners associations. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland. Sitting in regular session this eleventh day of April two thousand twenty-two as follows. That the city of Glen Arden established a grant, establishes a grant program to assist homeowner associations. That each HOA can apply for a grant based on criteria, criteria and qualifications set down by the mayor and city council. The maximum amount of each grant to any HOA will be sixty thousand dollars. That three hundred thousand dollars be set aside from the ARPA funds to fund the program. The following HRAs are eligible to apply for grants. The Glen Arden Forest Homeowners Association. The Glen Arden. Uh, Frost Homeowners Association, the Glen Arden Towns Homeowners Association. The Hamlin Streets Homeowners Association and the Woodmore Town Center at Glen Arden's Homeowners Association.
Thank you.
Council President. I think it said six, this is only five. Did it say six?
Oh, I thought it was five.
It did say six.
It should only be five.
It'd be five, yeah.
Line thirty, should change to five.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Sixty times five, yes, three hundred thousand, okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Did you get the council clerk?
Yeah.
Did you get, you got the change?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, could you take the vote, please?
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
President Ferguson?
Yes, thank you.
It's best.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have, um, our nineteen twenty twenty-two. Resolution to approve maintenance work for the Veterans Memorial Park. Motion to bring this resolution forth.
So move.
Second. Okay, um, any discussion? Okay. Council Clerk, could you please read the resolution, thank you.
Resolution R nineteen dash two thousand twenty-two, a resolution to approve maintenance work for the Veterans Memorial Park. This resolution is sponsored by, uh, Councilman James A. Herron. Co-sponsored by Council Vice President Angela D. Ferguson. Public hearing date Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, session, regular session. Date of introduction, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Again, this is a resolution to approve maintenance work for the Veterans Memorial Park. Whereas the city has a Veterans Memorial Park to honor the city's veterans. And whereas the council has determined that it is in the public interest to have maintenance contract. For the maintenance of the grounds at the Veterans Memorial Park. And whereas the council has been offered a proposal for the maintenance of the ground. From the original landscapers for the Veterans Memorial Park, Brightview formerly Brickmans. For the said contract ground maintenance. And whereas the council recommends that the city engage. Brightview to perform the services outlined in the proposal dated July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Attached here too as exhibit A for the. Inductive, I'm sorry. Um, amount of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session. This eleventh day of April two thousand twenty-two as follows. The authorization provided for this resolution is based on the attached proposal dated July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one from Brightview. In the amount of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The mayor or council president being is hereby authorized to enter into the maintenance agreement with Brightview. And to expend the sum not to exceed seven thousand three hundred. Uh, and twenty-seven dollars for the maintenance agreement for the Veterans Memorial, um, park. The funds for said contract should be paid from budget line seven three one zero dash one zero dash seven one dash seven one. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you. Um, did you take, uh? The vote?
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
President Ferguson?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Next, we have resolution twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-two, a resolution to declare city police vehicle as surplus. And approve sale of vehicle to the town of Marlow Heights. Motion to bring this resolution forth.
So move.
So move, second.
Thank you. Um. It was Jones. Move and read second. Okay, any discussion? Okay. Could you read this resolution, Council Clerk?
This resolution R twenty dash two thousand twenty-two, a resolution to declare. A city police vehicle as surplus and approve sale of the vehicle to the town of Marlow Heights. Uh, the sponsor is Council President Derek D. Curtis, Derek D. Curtis the second. Co-sponsor at the request of the administration. Public hearing Tuesday, March fifteenth, session, regular session. Date of introduction, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Again, this is a resolution to declare. A city police vehicle as surplus and approve the sale of the vehicle to the town of Marlow Heights. Whereas, uh, two thousand nine Chevy Impala city police vehicle indicated on the Maryland certificate. Of title number three seven nine six six three seven eight. Attached here too as exhibit A, the police vehicle has exceeded its useful life. And whereas pursuant to section. Eight to eight of the city charter. The mayor, with consent of the council, may declare any unusable obsolete or outmoded. Personal property or equipment belonging to the city as surplus property. Provided that such items are placed on the city's periodic surplus list posted in the municipal center. And circulated throughout the city with the monthly city meeting notice. Which shall identify means of acquisition to be by bid informal. Offer or specified auction date. And whereas all revenues collected from the sale of surplus property shall be deposited with the treasurer. The mayor deems the police vehicle to be unusable, obsolete, outmoded. Has little value and is no longer required for public purpose. And so shall be declared as surplus. And the council approves of said determination. And whereas the town of Marlow Heights has offered a written request to obtain. One of the city's unusable obsolete or outmoded personal police property vehicles. And the council unanimously has decided to offer the police vehicle at the cost of one hundred dollars to be paid in. Cash, which some shall be credited to budget line item five four one one dash. One zero dash one zero dash one zero miscellaneous revenue. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Glen Arden, sitting in regular session this eleventh day. Of April two thousand twenty-two has determined that the attached city-owned property is unusable. Obsolete or outmoded is little, is of little or no value. And is no longer needed for public purpose and is declared surplus. The council has determined to sell the police vehicle to the city of Marlow Heights for one hundred dollars. Which some shall be credited to budget line item five four one one dash one zero dash one zero dash one zero miscellaneous revenue. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you. Did you take the vote?
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
President Ferguson?
Yes.
It's best.
Thank you. And final resolution would be, um, resolution twenty-one twenty-two. A resolution authorizing a contract with New Holland Auto Group for the purchase of a public works vehicle. Um, motion to bring this legislation forth.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Could you, Council Clerk, could you please read, um, the resolution?
Okay. This is resolution R twenty-one dash two thousand twenty-two, a resolution authorizing a contract with New Holland Auto Group. For purchase of a public works vehicle. The sponsor is, uh, Council President Derek D. Curtis the second. Co-sponsors at the request of the administration. Public hearing Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, session, regular section. Date of introduction, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Date of introduction, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Again, this is a resolution authorizing the contract with New Holland Auto Group for the purchase of a public works vehicle. Whereas the council has determined that it is in the public interest to authorize the Glen Arden Public Works Department to purchase a vehicle to ensure continual operations of business. And whereas the council has previously approved in the budget the purchase of a one F two-fifty heavy-duty truck with plow and spreader so that the city may remove and maintain clear passage through the streets. And whereas due to the computer chip shortage, no trucks are available unlocked to purchase and must be specifically ordered from a dealer. It is necessary to purchase the truck from New Holland Auto Group at the price of fifty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. Based on the state of Pennsylvania's contract for the purchase of trucks attached as Exhibit A. And whereas the council approved the purchase of police cars in the current budget under budget line item eight-three-six-four-dash-three-zero-dash-eight-zero-dash-one-zero. Whereas section eight, eighteen of the city charter requires that the city engage in a competitive bidding process for the procurement of goods and services with an estimated cost exceeding two thousand dollars. Except for whenever a federal, state, county, or local government or agency thereof whose purchasing policies are comparable to those of the city. Has conducted a bid and awarded a contract. The city may purchase by contract the bid items at the bid price from the successful bidder. Subject of the approval of the mayor and council. And whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has conducted a competitive bidding process and awarded a contract to New Holland Auto Group for the purchase of vehicles attached here to as Exhibit A. Whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania purchasing policies are comparable to those of the city. And whereas count, the council declares that the provisions of section eight, eighteen B of the city charter have been satisfied so as to justify the waiver of competitive bidding process required by section eight, eighteen A of the city charter. And whereas New Holland Auto Group was the successful bidder for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's contract attached here to as Exhibit B. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular session this eleventh day of April, two thousand twenty-two as follows. That the purchase of a two thousand twenty-two F three-fifty four-by-four crew cab from New Holland Auto Group for the total amount of fifty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars per the proposal attached as Exhibit A to this resolution being is hereby approved and payment for the vehicle shall be made from the Capitol Project's outlay line item number eight-three-six-four-dash-three-zero-dash-eight-zero-dash-one-zero in the budget. And this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you. Okay, now can you take the vote for, um, on this resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
One word, Madam President, one question.
Okay.
Um, on, let's see. Online thirty on page one and it where it says where is the council approved purchase of police? Should I be a public works truck?
Yes, it should be.
And is that account number associated with public works or is it associated with pup with, uh, police? That budget line item. Maybe Mr. Dean can let us know. But if you just check it and we can just, you know, correct it if it's wrong and if it's right, we're fine.
Yes, um, I'm on, um, this is connected with the Capitol.
Oh, it's Capitol?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Herring and thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Is that it, um, Councilman Herring?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, you can proceed.
Councilwoman Jones? Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Faree?
Yes.
Thank you, and President Ferguson?
Yes.
Thank you, this is passed.
Thank you, thank you, Council Clerk for, uh, the reading of these eight resolutions. Now, um, next we have the administrative reports. First up is the mayor's report, um, presented by Attorney Mayor Curtis.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay. So you scroll up. Uh, so I will run through a, a few of the, a few of these things, but, um, they have been attached. Uh, so that you can read them at your leisure. Uh, any questions, I'll direct towards, uh, uh, city manager. Uh, so, uh, things that were accomplished, uh, resolutions councils actually sent over. Some awaiting council action, the resolution sidewalk contract selection. Uh, modification inclusive of ADA compliant sidewalks. Um, I know that we have, uh, G S Proctor coming in at a later date to, um, give a presentation on what they can do for us, uh, with all the concerns that the council has had. And thank the council tonight for passing the resolution on uh, hiring Police Chief Captain Regis Bryant, uh, who will start the senator. We did host, uh, a former woman's history monthly mayor or community forum woman making a difference at the grassroots levels, uh, program. Uh, so the palace include, uh, Darlene Woods, exec director, founder of DSW and Associates, Dr. Joanne Henry Fields, recent incorporated Jeanette Brandon PG Changemakers, Tamara Hewitt, CEO of New Care Counseling Services LLC. Uh, so couple of thing, a couple of these things we already went over last, so if you continue less, um, mayor's report, so if you continue to scroll down. Uh, well, I do want to highlight this one, sorry, scroll up a little bit more for, uh, number four. Uh, the wonderful essay writing opportunity for fourth graders, if I were mayor, I would essay contests. Um, so just wanted to remind the citizens of that. And, um, really that sums it up. If any, again, if any citizens have any questions as it relates to the, the mayor piece of the, uh, report, you can feel free to, to email the administration. You can reach out to the city manager. Or you can reach out to, uh, Mayor Cross, who will be back next week. Uh, there is, uh, for a council's, uh, notification, there were, I believe four nominations that I submitted today for, um, for the, uh, nominations for the Glen Arden Housing Authority Commissions. As you may be aware, uh, there are total five commissioners are supposed to be on the, um, commission. Uh, it's currently only four, um, excuse me, and two of them, uh, have, um, uh, served out their terms, so there technically three open positions. And so I submitted to the council today for, uh, nominations for the council to take up uh, to, uh, discuss and, uh, confirm, uh, those best suited uh, to serve on that commission, so for to, uh, for the council to discuss that. Uh, with that, uh, I'll send it over to the, um, city manager. I'm sorry, well, it's not my role. Uh, that's it for the mayor, mayor report.
Thank you, Attorney Mayor Curtis. Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman Jones?
I have a question concerning this event that's coming up April the thirtieth. Uh, I, we've had brief discussion about that, there, uh, uh, there's a flyer already out saying that it's called Painting with a Purpose. I understand that it's, uh, says it's for autistic awareness. Is, um, the, the paint party, is this to raise funds for this organization? Or is this something that they're having the, uh, the children to participate in? And the nutrition center is a small venue. Uh, like, uh, other council members have said, it's not there for, uh, rent or it's just for, um, uh, HOAs or community organizations. Uh, right now, it's still, uh, part of the senior, uh, it's the senior nutrition center and, and it was never placed for th- this type of venue. I think that this venue that they're going to have it in may be too small even for fifty, for fifty people, it is too small. I think that this needs to be, we need to contact these, uh, persons and have them, uh, find another venue. Not that I don't go along with what this is for, but the liability that the city, that because there's no contract or anything involved in, uh, asking for this venue, the city will be liable for anything that would possibly happen.
Uh, well, I, as, as Attorney Mayor, uh, who unfortunately just learned of this not too long ago, um, I will leave it up to the council to set policies, procedures as it relates to uh, nutrition center as it has done for, as it has done for the, um, gold room. I, I, I will talk to, uh, you know, permanent mayor, uh, uh, actually, I'll ask, uh, city manager Bogger if she knows of, um, you know, where we are as it relates to the, um, to the agreements we have set up with, uh, these individuals, if any.
As far as I'm aware, there's not been any agreements. I know that, um, Councilwoman Jones did provide something that had been used previously that I looked at that did look like it would be a good template to use if the council would, um, require something like that. Um, but I do not believe that this is a for-profit event. It's for the children and it's for awareness, um, with the police and with the community of the mannerisms and behaviors of autistic people when they come into contact with, um, other members of, uh, society so they can be aware. And, um, that's, that's what I know about the event.
Is it the, is it that the is it, is the issue is that the space is too small or is, is it that, um, this is done without the council's knowledge?
This was, uh, uh, and the other thing too, this, this event is not in the budget for any of the council, the police department or the mayor's office, so, um, and I saw an email that says that, uh, it, uh, doesn't cost the city anything. Anytime you turn on the lights in the city or use the facilities of the city, it costs these, the taxpayers this money. So if, if it's not a budgeted event given by the city, a city-sponsored event, I don't, I, I just don't agree with, and the space is kind of, you're talking about how many, exactly how many autistic children are, are going to be in, 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 in attendance?
I don't know the number of children, but I do believe it won't be more than fifty individuals altogether. We did plan, we did plan to have a sign-up sheet, um, through event break so that we would know exactly the number beforehand.
So in other, even with fifty, looking at the nutrition center on that side, just nutrition center. So you're saying that they're also planning on using the council chambers?
No, no, ma'am.
Well, I just don't see fifty people and having enough space to social distance. Because we're still going through the ends of a pandemic that requires masking and social distancing. When, you know, but, um, yeah, I just don't see that space, uh, big enough to support this. And like I said, it's not in the city, any of the city's budgets for, uh, a paint party. So they're also going to have paint? Is there someone there that's going to set up painting?
Yes, ma'am, it's going to be staffed by volunteers.
And see, what I'm not understanding is what is it exactly that they're going to be doing?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, nobody knows, okay. Thank you.
Uh, and, and Ms. Bogger, one, one question, is there a reason why the, um, the, the we aren't using the gold room, is there another event there?
No, there's no event there. We felt like the, the gold room would not be the best venue for, um, this event since it was, uh, no-cost event.
Well, is there a possibility thinking about other venues in the city other than city event, uh, city venues? What about, uh, in the neighborhood, the Woodmore Town Center, uh, Woodmore area where they had the Woodmore Clubhouse, uh, where the neighbor, the, the mayor is, uh, uh, is a resident, uh, couldn't they use that venue or that maybe the, um, Maryland Park and Planning, um, facility?
I'd have to check on that, yes, ma'am.
Is the community center off limits?
What, the Maryland National Park and Planning Community Center?
Uh, no.
Or the clubhouse?
Yep. Well, uh, the community center at the, um, town center.
I can't answer for that one because I don't live over there, I'm not sure what the homeowners, you know, offer for, you know, with the, with the
Are you talking about the other facility that we, uh, where the substation is?
Yes.
I don't know. The part, I mean, I, the problem I have, um, with this, um, uh, event is that it's not a Glen Arden-sponsored event. But, um, yet it has on the, um, the advertisement, it has our Glen Arden seal. And say it's co-sponsored by the mayor, but it, it has the Glen Arden seal on there. And, um, I'm, I'm concerned about any type of liability. Um, he is to get hurt or, I mean, I, and, and then I understand that the police, um, that are on duty, they will be, um, kind of just popping through. You know, but, um, I'm very sensitive about having children you know, um, in the building without massive, as far as I'm concerned, massive, um, security because of the Caraway two thousand seventeen event. But again, my concern is liabilities a- also because it's not a Glen Arden-sponsored event. And, um, it should not be carrying the Glen Arden logo on there.
I have one other question, but, uh, I think Councilman Faree had something before me.
Um, yes, thank you. So the Woodmore Town Center at Glen Arden Clubhouse, um, is for, uh, residence use and it, there is a kind of a hefty rental fee that, um, goes along with that. But certainly if this is a private event that Mayor Cross is hosting, um, she can look into that as an option. There's also the Woodmore Town Center Community Room that is available to Glen Arden's citizens. Um, but regardless of what venue it is, I do have a concern around the fact that it's paint. And that, um, there's a potential for the paint to damage the carpets. Um, so I, I think when you, I had, would have to pull up the rental agreement, but I'm not certain that you can like if I wanted to just personally, my friends have a paint party at the Woodmore Town Center Community Room, I do not think I could do that. Um, so I think Um so I think that's the first thing that, you know, the type of event that it is, along with all the other concerns that have been expressed, but just kind of from a logistical standpoint, I'm I'm not sure the paint would be an appropriate medium to use in the nutrition center, the Gold Room, or the Woodmore Town Center Community Room.
Okay, thank you. I and forgive me, I like you guys, I'm just learning of the the event recently, so just don't know all the particulars of it. Um so uh and Ms. Barbara, the the parents of the children are supposed to be accompanying their kids, correct, or?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Unfortunately, Shaws, I can't answer all of your questions, but um you know, I'm pretty sure that um Mayor Cross can, which comes back, and it's up to the council to decide whether uh as a policy um the nutrition center should be used uh for a private event um by an elected official.
For the record, I'd like to say, like I said, this is not a city-sponsored event. It is not in anyone's budget line item. So it should not be held. I think that they should ask them to find another venue. Because I mean, if I just decided to come up and say, all right, I'm gonna bring all my uh relatives over, we're gonna go use the nutrition center for chicken dinner. What could anybody say if this is what we're gonna do?
But I like I said, I I agree, but like I said, I think it's up to the council to say yea or nay to something like that. I I myself as acting mayor for one week can cancel the event in in that authority. I mean, for me, for acting mayor, that'll be a a step too far, but it wouldn't be a step too far for the council to um you know, provide guidance on what we can use that for, what we can't use that for. Uh that's in your your authority, not mine as acting.
Okay. Council President, I I think we should take a consensus from the council to find out if we, you know, um this event should continue. I mean, we need to give it is scheduled for April the thirtieth. Today is the um eleventh. This will give them enough time to find another venue if the if it's the council's pleasure that they don't want that event held in that venue.
Council clerk, if you take a consensus. Those of consensus is to um to have them look for another venue? Ms. Jones?
Uh yes.
Okay, what, sorry. Is it okay for me to take the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um Councilwoman Jones?
Uh yes, due to the fact that it is not a city-sponsored event and it's not in anyone's budget to sponsor to uh do this. Yes.
All right. Councilman Harry?
Oh shit. Um let's see, I don't understand all the particulars on that. I'm not sure what's going on, and I am very sensitive to people with disabilities. I do know that when we have Glenn Arden Day, we have a paint sit down there, but we only have it on the side, on the council side where there's no carpet, because paint spills and we can wipe it up off the floor. Um I have a major concern again um with this event. Again, not being a city-sponsored event and what our liability will be um with children with disabilities who are autistic. I know a number of autistic children and they're a lot of them have a lot of different behavioral behavioral and mannerisms that could be you know, unsettling for some people, you know, and I I just wanna know, you know, um it I'm I'm just not comfortable with the whole thing because I don't know what's going on. I I just heard about it like the other day, so I'm gonna be like, so the consensus is whether we want them to have it or not? Is that what the consensus is? Okay, so no, I I prefer them not to have it down there until we can find out more information.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Harris?
No.
Okay, so again, the uh consensus was to have them move to another venue?
Yes. I'm sorry, if my vote was if it's confusion, my vote is no, I don't want them in there either.
Okay, all right. And uh Councilwoman Gill?
Abstained.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Farid?
Um yes, I was actually gonna ask if we could postpone taking this consensus until we can at least get some answers to our questions. I don't know that um it not being in the budget means necessarily that there's no funding for it, like there may be monies left over from another event. I don't know. I just think that there are enough questions for me that I don't feel comfortable saying one way or the other. The only thing I would feel comfortable with saying is they would could not be a a painting event unless as Councilman Herring said, that was done on the chamber side where it's floor and it could be cleaned up easily. But I'm going to abstain as well.
Okay, thank you. Um President Ferguson?
No.
Okay, so we have five. And again, everyone who said no, that is in regards to the moving to a different venue.
Also, clerk, I believe we have four.
No.
Two abstains.
I thought we had.
Of course.
Four and two abstains.
We have four and two abstained. I abstained.
Yes, yes, you're correct. You're correct. Okay, so we have four yeses and two abstained, so this is passed.
So, Council President, uh I have a question now. Um um who will notify the uh persons that they will have to find another venue? Um city manager or the acting mayor? I would say um city manager. Okay, and I I'm sorry, I would hate, you know, I understand she doesn't know much about the the event, but um she wasn't given much information either, but um someone will have to notify them and let them know. Thank you.
Uh yeah, I'm sorry. Um Madam, sorry, Madam President, this this new will be on this side. I have to, can I say something, please?
Oh, yeah.
Um I I'll send the um I know the mayor is out of the country. Uh but I will still send uh her an email uh with hopes that every, I believe the the event I think, because I don't know much about this, for April thirtieth. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Uh so by the time she comes back, she'll still have opportunity to communicate with uh her partners for that event. Uh but I'll still send her an email uh to let her know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the uh city manager Barbara's report.
Thank you, President Ferguson. Um just to go over the city manager's report, some highlights. Um we continue to meet with the treasurer to plan and coordinate the budget. Um we do plan to get this to the mayor um when she returns, and then we will bring it to the council um after the mayor has made her adjustments to the budget. Um I did attend three virtual meetings with Maryland Municipal League and the Maryland Department of Management and Budget about the ARPA funds reporting. We are still on track to have our report due to them, to the treasury by April the thirtieth. Um I did meet with vendors about the MLK Playground Project. We have two bids. Um and the third company that we contacted um declined to bid on the project. Um the play the playground project actually doesn't have to be complete until next spring. So we do have a little bit of time, but I do plan to bring forward to you all the um the quotes that we got from the vendors and to see if there's an opportunity to forego the other um bid since it was a no bid. Um we did do the mask and COVID test giveaway with the council and mayor on Monday, March the seventh. Uh in human resources, we did onboard two new employees, the public work maintenance tech, uh Mr. Everett Jones and our part-time code enforcement officer, Ms. Keisha Williams. Um we have closed on on the code enforcement officer position for the Tuesday through Saturday. Um uh position, we are interviewing this week for those uh positions. Um the director of public work closes on April the twenty first. Um and the Gold Room crew member closed. Um and Ms. Robinson has those applications to review. Code enforcement, um notice notices of highlight um include new two new businesses that got their licenses. There's one business called Smipes, um which is a clothing business, and then Tidewater Dental, which is over at the Woodmore Town Center. There was uh one license renewal, thirteen notice of inspections were uh some were issued. Three building and sign permits were issued, four citizen complaints were um addressed, thirty-two citations were issued. Two-stop work orders were issued and one inoperative vehicle was um ticketed. In Public Works, um Public Works did trim up the bushes here at the town hall. Um they have started their mowing today. Um in March, they had the furnace in the Gold Room hallway worked on. Um they also completed seven work orders for the Gold Room and Community Center. And they completed work orders to place dead end um street signs for Fifth Street, and they also put up signs throughout the city, including McLean and Fifth Street. And um they did complete the work order to place a do not block driveway sign near the American Legion driveway. Um the Gold Room March report included seven Gold Room events and five Community Center events um that were completed successfully. Um they did begin sign-in systems to use for more friendly booking and operation process for city residents and beyond. Um the Gold Room coordinator has a new platform that she will be using for um the public to be able to see when the availability is for the Gold Room and Community Center. That will be rolled out shortly. Um there was shred day was here um on the ninth. Um that's in April, but she did mention that was gonna be coming up uh in her March report. The webmaster media specialist, um the April-June quarterly postcard was um worked on and pending submissions by the Maryland National Park Police and Mayor and City Administration Event. Um prepared flyers for and banners for for monthly mayoral community forum for March ninth. Um she did complete her FY twenty-three budget and uploaded council meeting information to the city website and media outlets, as well as the city meeting recordings to the website and YouTube. And we are in discussions with an individual um for the new television station manager position. Um we are finalizing a contract for that, and we will bring that to you all at your next work session for review and then for the next meeting in May to hopefully bring that person on board. You have any other questions? I'll be glad to entertain them.
Any questions, council members?
Yes, Ms. Madam President.
Yes.
I have a question. Um and and it's on it's on the Gold Room again, and it's on the church. Now, I got a call this weekend from the church about being back down in the nutrition center. And I'm not, I'm still trying to figure out why they're down there. That's the first question. Um when, again, we said it wasn't a rental facility. Um I went in there on Saturday and the place was just in is really is a mess, and I can't believe that we, as a community, we'll sign a contract in good faith with the organization to use that Gold Room only to put them down in a in a in a nutrition center, which looks like a storeroom to to have church in. Um I got the contract from them uh from the church, and it's some somebody modified a Gold Room contract, and I would like to know what piece of legislation was presented um to this council to modify that contract when the rule clearly states that the contract cannot be modified without council approval. Um also, the contract was not signed by anybody from the city. So the church has been meeting in that Gold Room for fourteen years, and I don't care how big the church is. I don't care if they only have one member in there. If they pay their money, they can have whoever have a the the maximum number of people that they need to have in there is four hundred. It does not give a minimum number. So I'm trying to figure out what is going on with this situation that we continue to disrespect this group who has been in this in that Gold Room for fourteen years and why and 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 who is giving these giving people authority to move these people around in a building that the city that then needs approval from the city council? When I know I have not received any legislation, I have not seen any legislation, and I've seen any modified contracts. I submitted uh uh the resolution from nineteen seventy-seven showing that that whatever one was designated for. So I'm just trying to figure this all out because I think it's I think it's I think it's unfair to the church to continue to do this to them when they when they when they in good faith sign the contract with the city of Glen Arden for the use of that Gold Room, and because somebody, somebody or someones think that they need to be downstairs, put them downstairs without any authority from this council. So I just wanna know where are we at with this situation with that church?
Oh, I'm I'm sorry. Go ahead. Uh city manager Barbara?
No, I was just gonna say that um the contract was not signed by me um that I'm aware of. I I'd have to look at it again. I'm a do sign a I do sign a number of contracts. Um and I would have to talk with Elder Brown, who is the authorized person that signed that contract and is the authorized renter of the space to see um what his concerns are about being in the space, because he was fully aware of when we um did discuss moving that they would be moving there, and my understanding is is that he was okay with that.
Okay, this is my problem with with that is that no one has authority to move them down to that nutrition center. That's the whole problem. They signed a contract for the Gold Room. That's where they need to be. No, who who gave authority to move any? That's just like me signing a contract for the Gold Room. And and I come up here for the Gold Room and y'all say, okay, well, you know what? You're going downstairs. I did, that's not what I signed the contract for, and then to have them then to bring another contract, a a a a contract that's been a Gold Room contract that's been modified and has nutrition center written written across it without authorization from the council is and again, the code says nothing, the contracts cannot be modified unless it's approved from the council. That contract was um was um was modified and it shouldn't have been. You cannot use a Gold Room contract for another venue in our building without the council knowing what's going on and approving that that approving the contract, first of all, and approving that that section of the building would be a rental space. You know, I mean, I I guess my thing is this, and what's really rubbing me the wrong way is that we, at the beginning of every meeting, give an invocation, have an invocation, and we ask God to give us the wisdom to to do things that are right and just, and then we go and do something like this to somebody who in good faith signed a contract to use that Gold Room, and we throw them downstairs. And if you go down there, you have tables laying up against the wall, the place is dirty, it is not a good venue for having no church. I mean, I would like to see somebody else have their church down there, honestly. And you go down there and look in that room. That room looks like a storage room. So I think it's in 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 the fact of the matter, again, of of it, again, is that that's not what they contracted for. We as a government need to honor our contracts and act in good faith when we sign off on these contracts. Um um you know, this 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 isn't, um I mean, I I it isn't fair to them. It isn't fair to them at all. And I think that they need to be put in the Gold Room where the contract they um 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 signed uh with the the contract that they signed is um what they're gonna get. And like I said, I mean, in I and honestly, I'm not, I'm not directing my frustration at you, city manager. Um you know, you're on board, you just, you know, you're new. I'm just, it's just frustrating in general that not only you, but other council members think it's okay, and that's not, and it's not, it's not okay. It's not, it's not okay to go against your word to somebody you signed a contract with, and then skip them another contract and say, here, you you going downstairs. And what other option do they have but to sign a contract? Because if they don't sign that, where they gonna go? It's almost like you got them over a barrel. You know, so I I I spoke to uh Elder Brown on Sunday. And he told me he was not satisfied with the space. He didn't think it was right. He he's And he told me he was not satisfied with the space. He didn't think it was right. He, he's very upset that the city would do that to them after fourteen years of being in the goal room. And I don't think that's the type of reputation we need to have, is that we don't honor our contracts. So I mean, I, I, again, like I said, you knew on board, you don't know the whole ins and outs of all of this. And I'm not directing my frustrations at you. You know, I really appreciate you even being here tonight. You know, with the circumstances that you're going through. So I, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair. And they need to be in the goal room where they contracted. Again, the contract that they have is not signed by any city official. And you're correct, no one signed off on that contract. So they need to be, they need to be up there where they, where they contracted. You know, that's my feelings.
Madam President, can I add to that from the administration side?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so, so a couple of things. If the leadership of the church is not satisfied, that's news to the administration because in emails, he does seem very satisfied with it. So, you know, if, if he's not, then it's, it's nothing that he's communicated to the administration. Because all the interactions with him has been that he's satisfied. Now, are there other church members who aren't satisfied? Possibly, but the, the leader of, of that church and the person who signed the contract was satisfied. Again, City Manager Barbara will reach out to him to, you know, check in with that. Another piece, as I said before, it is the council's, you know, pleasure to set policy as it relates to the goal room, nutrition center. I hundred percent agree with that. I do know that in the in the good faith negotiations with Elder Brown is that understanding that we have, you know, they have been there for, for fourteen years. And they've used the space for, you know, currently at two hundred dollars, a hundred dollars an hour. Is our understanding from the administration side, that's not what the goat room, doesn't make good business sense for the goat room. So from understanding, talking with staff is that we're renting out the goat room for two hundred dollars for two hours. But we could be renting out that space for thirty-seven hundred dollars. Now, in fairness to the citizens of Glen Arden, it, it makes business sense for us to use the goat room for business. And this has nothing to do with if you love the Lord, if you don't love the Lord, or, you know, this is just good business practice. I wouldn't rent out a prime space for prime time for two hundred dollars and ignore the thirty-seven hundred dollars in revenue that could bring in for the citizens to benefit off of that, because that's what it's supposed to do. I, like I said, hundred percent agree with you about policy. It is the council's authority to set policy. And so if someone someone overstepped that, I'm pretty sure we can correct that easily. But I do encourage the council, has nothing to do whether what you like church, love the Lord, don't love the Lord, or anything like that. It is the council's, also the council's fiduciary responsibility to run to set policy that allows the goat room to run as a business as it should. And it is not acting in good fiduciary responsibility to rent out that space, in my opinion, for two hundred dollars. When there's thirty-seven hundred dollars on the table to rent out that room that benefits the citizens because our elected officials first responsibility is to the citizens. So so I think that there are multiple components to this. And, and no way want to disrespect the church at all. But there has to be some middle ground in here because I wouldn't want to completely displace the church. But I wouldn't be from administration side for Jessica and Ms. and Ms. Barber would not want to forego a benefit of even fifteen hundred dollars to thirty-seven hundred dollars to to sub that for a two hundred dollar rent.
Madam President, may I respond? Let me say this. I've never seen that go room rent for thirty-seven hundred dollars on a Sunday. Since I've been living in Glen Arden. And you're not going to get thirty-seven hundred dollars on a Sunday in that goal room. It's just as simple. If you say it Friday or Saturday, maybe. Sunday, it ain't happening. And, and whether you can get thirty-seven hundred dollars or not, the rules and regulations in place allow them to rent it for the two hundred dollars that's there. So they entitled to get it. If they sign the contract for it, that's what they should get for it. You know, until you change the rules and regulations, it's, it is what it is. But again, it isn't always about profits, profits over people. That's not what we do. You know, yeah, we want to make a profit, but sometimes you can't always look at the profit margin and, and, and everything. You know, yes, I do believe the goal room need to be making money. It needs, it needs to, it needs to come out of that, out of hole it's, it's in. You know, but again, you don't sit there and, 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 and do wrong to a, 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 a paying client. Because all of a sudden, in your opinion, you feel it needs to be making a profit. You know, in my opinion, it, I, I feel that it, it is what it is. The rules are what they said that, and that's what you, that's what you give it to them for. If we set it at a hundred dollars an hour for that, that's what it is. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't know, nobody is gonna pay thirty-seven hundred dollars on a Sunday. First of all, if you're gonna do that and you wanna, and you know that, then bring it, bring it, bring it, the, the stats to show that you can rent that room for thirty-seven hundred dollars on a Sunday. See, we're going by word of mouth from, 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 just because somebody told us that, but we ain't got no paperwork to back it up. So again, and so because somebody says we can get thirty-seven hundred dollars, you're like, okay, well, kick the church out, put them downstairs in a, in a, in a nutrition center. The, 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 the council has already, the nineteen seventy-seven council has already said what that center is for down there. It's the nutrition center, it's a community room. That's what it's designated for. Not a rental center. The only place that rents in there is the goal room. The, 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 the code says that we will have somebody to run the goal room. The goal room facility is designated as enterprise zone. That's the only place that's designated as enterprise zone. That's it. That's in the code. And if you want to change the code, fine, then that's what you're gonna do. But until then, the rules are set where they are. And you have to abide by those rules because you feel you can make more money. I mean, I make, I mean, there's a lot of ways people can make more money, but they don't do it all the time because it ain't, it ain't the right thing to do. So I'm just saying, I just think it's, it is cold-hearted, in my opinion. Because, you know, if you want to change the rules, you want to give them fair notice to say that you want to change the rules, that's, that's different. But to just simply have them come on, they say you're downstairs, and this council has not made, has not changed the rules. And the code says that no contract and the rules should not be violated unless this council said so. So to speak and say it's okay to move them down there and violate, we're, we're breaking the rules. That's who's breaking the rules. We're breaking the rules because we're not following our own rules. We just, we just threw out some kids out of the nutrition center for, who with disabilities. Because we felt the rules aren't being followed and that place is, is in a rental space. But yeah, we're gonna put the church down there because somebody told us we should put it down there because we're gonna make thirty-seven hundred dollars on a Sunday. Nah, it ain't happening.
Can I just, Madam President, just three points and then I can put it, put it down. So three points is one, the rules that were established in nineteen seventy-seven, I encourage the council to reevaluate those rules. Because the council does have authority to, to reevaluate them to see if that is the best use from nineteen seventy-seven. Because it's twenty twenty-two. The goat room, as the auditor said, is at a four hundred thousand dollar deficit. And that represents the business practice that we have of renting out for two hundred dollars now. That's not good fiscal responsibility by the council. And the presentation that Ms. Jessica Robinson presented about the possibilities of the goat room. She's did add actual facts to that of just how the business is booming. Also, two billion dollar business, which lends to the fact that we could get some more money. So it's not, you know, a promise of thirty-seven hundred dollars. It's an opportunity for the council to trust who they hired to run the goal road to, to renovate, restructure and have it go from a four hundred thousand dollar deficit to a profit. Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Is there a reason why the community room over at Woodmore Town Center can't be used by the church? That, that would already have an established contract, so there would not need to be any modifications to the gold room contract. And also the rate is fifty dollars versus the two hundred dollars that they would even be paying for the gold room.
You have to be a Glen Arden resident to use that.
I mean, we, we, the nutrition center is not able to be rented and we're renting it. So I'm not sure that, I mean, we could certainly amend that, you know, in order to have them use the the space. I'm, I'm speaking more from the, the appearance of the space and not, you know, using the gold room if we don't have to. I'm just trying to find a compromise. If that's, if, I'm not sure if that's been considered and if there's a reason why we're not going that route. But I did have another question, Council President. I'll, I'll hold off on it if we want to continue the discussion on the gold room, but it's about the parks.
Madam President, just one more comment, second follow-up on this.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, we don't, we don't want the community room over at Woodmore Town Center because it's not a rental, it's not a rental. That's in our lease agreement. It's not supposed to be rented out. It's supposed to be a community room for citizens to use for community meetings, the same as downstairs. That's the issue we're running into with them over there now and is that they're saying we're renting it out for events when we're not renting it out. We're just letting people use it. And we've charged fifty dollars as a maintenance because fifty dollars doesn't cover much of anything. It's just a maintenance fee to clean up, they had a room cleaned up. That's why, that's, that was in our lease agreement. But again, that room, again, again, me, again, with the goal room and saying four hundred thousand dollars, we're losing four hundred thousand dollars. Yes, we lost four hundred thousand dollars. But see, it really bothers me when people don't know the history of that goal room. The goal room constantly made money. Constantly made money until the county changed the laws for dance halls and it rolled us up into that and it cut into our income from the events that we were having on Fridays and Saturdays. So we were doing what we had to do to get the permit to be able to bring those, bring that activity back in. That's the first thing. Second thing is, the roof started leaking. For two years, that roof leaked. And we did not get revenue off of that, off of that, off of that goal room. So it isn't like it just was making money because the fees weren't right. The fees were fine. It's just that circumstances came up, then COVID rolled up in here. So that's what I'm saying. Get your facts right to find out why we have the deficit. And even the auditors mentioned the deficit about the roof replacement and the COVID. So that's what it is. So sometimes you gotta, you gotta, you gotta learn the history of what you're talking about before you put something out there that is not accurate. That is not what happened to the goal room. It had nothing to do with the fees. We've taken up the fees. It had to do with circumstances that beyond our control. Actually, COVID, the roof repair, the county changing the rules for, for banquet halls. All the three of those things really decimated what we had to do. And we haven't even addressed the dance hall issue. So you can change the rules all you want to, but if the police run up in there and say you don't have a permit because you don't, you're not following county regulations, you're still not gonna make money off of it. So again, sometimes it's best to learn the history, know what's going on, know about the ins and outs of something. And I'm telling you right now, she can make any presentation she want to make, and you know, thirty-seven hundred dollars is gonna roll up in that room. One, we don't have a catering service in there. That's the biggest thing that most organizations want. They don't, they want to come in that room, pay for everything. They get the food and everything else. We don't have that in it. That's, that room is mostly for parties and weddings and stuff like that, that do, they're bringing the caterers. So business events is, is something, I mean, you can sell whatever you want to sell. You know, I mean, but it don't mean it's gonna happen. It can be as smooth and glossy and shiny as I don't know what, but it don't mean it's gonna, it's gonna be the best, be what's best for the community. So I'm just saying, you know, this is, I mean, there's a whole lot of dynamics to that room and why we are where we are. And but whether, wherever we are, the bottom line is that somebody signed a contract with the city of Glen Arden in good faith. And they should be given what they, what they, what they contracted for. And that's all I'm saying. So when you change the rules, then you can do that. You can, you, if you want to move them down there and if they want, you want them to leave, so be it. You want to kick them out, that's what you want to do. That's what you want to do. Because it's about making a profit, right? So who cares where they go? That's what I'm hearing. Who cares where they go? Because it, it isn't, it doesn't look like nobody did anything down in the nutrition center to make it even look like it's somewhat decent to have a church down in it. You go down in there, you got tables laying all over the place. It's dusty, it's dank, it's, the carpet is filthy, it needs to be cleaned. It's, it's just, it's just disgraceful. It's absolutely disgraceful. That we, as a city, as a government, would do that to this church, who's been in this, in that goal room for fourteen years. So if y'all want to put profit over people, that's, that's, that's what you want to do. That's, that's fine and dandy. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit by and be quiet about it. I'm gonna speak out on it, so.
I agree with you, Councilman Herring, and I can't, and I won't mindset, we won't make that much money.
Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council President. I'm sorry, Councilman Herring, I don't know what you're looking at down there, but I know for a fact that the ladies in the police department have been wiping those tables down with Clorox. They have made sure that the public works has come in and cleaned the carpet. Now, I'm not sure if Public Works is going in there on a regular and vacuuming, you know, behind them to, to make sure that the, the, the area stays that way. But they keep the kitchen clean, the ladies in the police department keep the kitchen cleaned. And they keep that area clean because they want to be in an area where they are, because of the pandemic, they want to make sure the people coming in there. Or, or, and themselves, keep that area clean. And at one time, the police were using, had computers down there when using. So those ladies in the police department have been keeping that area clean. The dark, the dank, the dust, I, you know, I, there was an issue with the ladies in the police department because when all that food was bought in there, they had just cleaned that area up, vacuumed. They had the public works shampoo the carpet. They took all the stuff out that wasn't of, of any necessity. It looked like it was whatever and threw it in the trash can, you know, so they keep that area pretty, pretty clean. It's not the, the, what you're describing is not what's in that nutrition center. And if, I think if we sit down as a council and have a, we need to sit down and have a discussion concerning this because if you're saying that the gentleman, the, the church should rent the goal room for what it's worth. If they have one person or four hundred, the capacity, then maybe the rate needs to be changed. You know, for them to use that area. Because I remember sometimes during the, when AA and NA were up there. Yes, they use the area, but when it came time for them to have celebrations, they would use the whole goal room. You know, to have Christmas party or to have a, a celebration of the, the individuals that were in the program to let folks know that they've achieved certain heights. So, but in that case, to me, if you're gonna use it for that, then it should have been rented out as a an event, as a, a event higher than just the NA and AA using it because it was a Christmas party, you know? So I, I think we need to just give the, the goal room, like I said, the city of Glen Arden has been like sitting on hold. I know the first four years that I came in, when I came in, I thought, oh, this is like nineteen seventy-three. Where, what are they doing here? You know? We need to move forward. We need to give these things an opportunity to see if they, they can work, you know? We're not even, it seems like we want to put brakes on a, a, a person that we bought in to address the issue of the goal room. You know, to move it forward. It's like once again, we get right, we, oh, this is what we want. And then you get right to the implementation of something and then everybody freezes and nothing gets done. That's why Ward Three Streets aren't done. That's why sidewalks aren't done, because we're sitting on everything and not moving forward. So we need to give it an opportunity to do just that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Harris.
No, so I got a question. When the church was coming in to, you know, to have their service, were they told on the day that they were having a service that they had to relocate and already thinking that they were supposed to be in the goal room? Or were they already further, like, I mean, you know, previously informed that they had to move? Could somebody answer that for me first?
There was a discussion with Elder Brown prior to them moving to the nutrition room.
So on the day of their service, they didn't sign the information out?
No, they knew where to go.
All right, so again, I, I, so I agree with, you know, Councilwoman Jones that we need to sit down and you know, go over the rules and the regulations for the goal room. I agree with that. I also agree with Councilman Herring that, you know, we can't put profit over people. Like, I mean, I, I ain't get on the council to, to just be about money. I, but I got on this council to be about people. Like, that's just me. So I'm, you know, I, I, I take it a certain type of way when we just sitting there talking about money, money, money. And we just need to be talking about what's, what's the, what's the best way to move forward. So I mean, we got to find like a happy median or, or middle ground on this for real. Because, I mean, I'm not really hearing that. I mean, for, for real, the money that we get comes from God in the first place. So if the service has been put on, like, I would thank everybody on this. We, we start off praying and everybody on this council act like they religious. So I would, I would assume that anybody would think like we should be trying to figure out what's the best thing to do. Um, I, you know, I'm gonna take my hat off to um, you know, Councilwoman Farid because at least she tried to offer uh ultimatum with them using something different other than just, you know, the nutrition center. But I just hear people talking about money. I'm, I'm not really, um, I'm not really too cool with that. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman Harrison. Um.
I'm sorry, Madam, uh, uh, shoot, really bad being on the other side of this. Uh, Madam President, can I just say one thing?
Okay, next I'm going to one of you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So let me set the record because I, I think there, you know, some shots being fired. It's like, I am in no way suggesting that we displace the church at all. I am in no way saying that we prioritize money over people. I've never said that. I'm not behind that at all. So let me get the record straight on that. Not once. I, I'm here to serve people. I got elected to serve people. That's what I believe in. I also believe that the goal room is enterprise and is built to make money. And so I agree that the council should have discussion on what's the best way to structure the goal room and have a, a designated criteria for the nutrition center. I'm not in favor of displacing the church. In fact, the nutrition center is the place where they can meet. But the issue, which I agree, is that nobody ha- on the administration side has the authority to move from there. I a hundred percent agree with uh Councilman Herring on that. So I just wanted to set the record straight on that because I think it's getting, you know, glossed that or painted that, you know, I'm talking about money here. No, I'm, I'm for the happy medium. I do not want to displace them. I want them to have a place to worship. Um, I just think that we need to sit down and talk. And again, to make it loud and clear for everybody, I'm not prioritizing money over people. Um, I think that we, you know, need to get all of this together. Uh, and so tha- that's my short spiel. I just wanted to clear the record on that.
Yeah, brother, ain't nobody say particularly point out you and say that you were putting money over people, unless you feel like that was you, bro. But I, I, I never said, I never said, you know, uh, Mayor, Mayor Curtis, you understand? But what I'm saying, what I'm just saying from, from a general perspective is like, if you're gonna say something about funds, I would expect you to say something about people as well. That's all I'm saying. So I mean, I, I, I would, I would like to hear us both talk about both because we, we serving on both sides here, right? We supposed to be making sure that the funds stay intact and we also supposed to be making sure that we taking care of our people. So we can't come on one end and just be like, well, enterprise, enterprise, funds, 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 funds. And that's all I'm getting to. Like, I'm not pointing a finger at you. I'm not pointing a finger. Nobody on the council. All I'm saying is that like I got here for to serve people. And at the end of the day, I'm not gonna just look at it from one side. Like, I'm, I'm just expecting us as a council to look at it from every side and figure out how we can just make this situation the best situation for all the, all the council, all bodies. That's all I'm saying. I don't play, I don't place fingers. I would have said your name.
I, I, I didn't say you pointed fingers by the way. I just want to set the record straight based on what was said on this discussion. So I a hundred percent look forward to working with you when I get back on the council side to see how we can make this work.
Um. Okay, um. Councilwoman, um, Giam, is this uh still related to the goal room? I mean, to, to the outside subject?
Actually, no. I was actually going to ask you, Council President and my colleagues. I need to excuse myself. I'm really not feeling.
Oh, by all means, yes. I meant to tell you, you could, you could have gone. Yes, please.
My apologies.
Have a good, a good night. I'll be playing for you. So, um, uh, Councilwoman Free.
Whew, um. I'm like, what was I gonna ask? I was gonna ask about the, uh, the, the playgrounds. Ms. Barber, um, can you, I know we had some discussion last week after the regular meeting over email. Can you give um, an update about the Seventh Street Park and um the vendors that you looked at and how that all ties into, um, if it does tie into the MLK Playground project?
Sure. Um, so the Seventh Street Park, I had an opportunity to meet with the National Fitness Court, um, individuals out of the West Coast. Um, the mayor had um put me in touch with them and they are a company that puts in fitness and fitness, um, parks for jurisdictions. They um invite you to apply for a grant for um the fitness park. And then they um, you know, evaluate your grant um against the other grants that they have invited. Um, it's a thirty thousand dollar grant. The um total cost of the park is a hundred and forty thousand. And so the total cost um with the concrete slab that would be, um, excuse me, that would be necessary, would be somewhere between a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the city. Um, is that the most ideal situation? No, but that is one of the grants that's out there that's available. Um, there is another grant that's available through the Department of Natural Resources, but that doesn't open up until June and we plan to apply for that grant as well. Um, the vendors I talked to at the MLK are completely separate and they are just for the playground. Um, well, they're for the playground and the fitness area out at the MLK Park. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Um, it does. It's helpful to know that that's moving along. I guess what I'm, and it's probably not a question for you, but more for a question from uh Mayor Cross when she gets back, is where the prioritization came in. Um, we passed the resolution last year for a Seventh Street Park and at that time there were no plans for an MLK Park and I'm just concerned that um, the Seventh Street Park was not advanced at that time because it was said we didn't have a city manager in place who could do that, who had any experience with um with grants and, and writing grants. And now we do, but it seems that the Seventh Street Park has not been prioritized, which is why I put forth a resolution for us to move forward with using the ARPA funds if we're not going to be um prioritizing and getting those grants. And understand that there's a timeline and a schedule, it seems, from what you said about you have until next spring for the MLK project. I just want to make sure that um, that we're prioritizing what the council has passed um as saying that that's what, what we were going to do for the city. Um, so if we can just kind of keep those discussions going and get a sense of a timeline for when we're gonna get that Seventh Street Park, there are a lot of children who are looking for there to be a playground, which is different than, you know, upgrading a playground. So um if we can just keep that in mind and again, when Mayor Cross returns, maybe we can talk about a timeline.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Free. Um, Councilman Harrison?
I'm, I'm sorry. I never took my hand down. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, um, with, um, as I move on to the city treasurer, Stuart. Report.
Thank you, President Ferguson. Let me see if I could share my screen. No, I cannot share my screen. Let me try again. No, I cannot share my screen. This is the, pardon me?
I was asking the council, can you allow him to do that?
I'm doing it now.
Thank you.
Um, can you tell me if you're seeing the financial report?
Yes.
Great, great. So this is the treasurer's report for the month of February. It is to the end of the February twenty twenty-two. We'll deal with the highlights of the financial statements and we'll look at the revenues and expenditure for the month of February twenty twenty-two. And we have total revenues of six million eight hundred and seven thousand four thirty-four. With total expenses of two million seven sixty-eight, seven sixty-nine. Of expenses, we have total revenue exceeding total expenses by four million and thirty-eight thousand six sixty-six. Um, the city real property tax revenue or real property tax collection has, as recently said, is waning. The, 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 the collections are going down now. Um, for the month of February, we collected twenty-six thousand five seventy-one. And in March, as a subsequent review showed that we collected thirty thousand dollars. At the end of February twenty twenty-eight, uh, twenty twenty-one, sorry, twenty twenty-two, collections for general funding amounted to four million three hundred and twelve thousand nine eighty-three. Where local taxes were three million eight hundred and four thousand eight twenty-eight. License and permits was forty thousand one forty-seven. State grant, said ninety-one thousand nine sixty-two. General our service charges, which included streetlights and special assessment at two hundred and seventy-one thousand eight seventy-five. And other financial sources of one hundred and four thousand one seventy-one. During the month of February, the city had billed personal property taxes of two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Of this amount, forty-three thousand seven seventy-one was received by the end of February twenty twenty-two. And in a subsequent review of March twenty twenty-two, there were collections of one hundred and thirty-two thousand six oh four. March twenty twenty-two as well, we also had personal property tax billing of three thousand nine seventy-three. Next, we look at the city of Glen Arden municipality operations. So these are the operations that the city use as compared to the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. General fund revenue budgeted at four million seven seventy-six thousand three thirty-five. The current usage or the current actual amount received was four million three hundred and twelve thousand nine eighty-three. This represented ninety percent of um the budget. General fund expenses budgeted at four million eight twenty-five thousand five fifty with actual amount spent of two million six hundred and five thousand two thirteen, which represented fifty-four percent. Revenue for special revenue budgeted amount was two million two fifty-one thousand two fifty-nine. Be actually received to date, two million two hundred and forty-six thousand twenty-six, which represented ninety-nine percent or close to a hundred percent. Expenses as related to special revenue, we budgeted sixty-six thousand seven ninety-six. And actual amount spent to date was eighteen thousand two sixty-five, representing twenty-seven percent. Capital project fund revenues were budgeted at one million six hundred and seventy-five thousand seven seventy-five. Of this amount, currently, we receive up to two hundred and twenty-three thousand one forty-four, presenting thirteen percent. Capital project expenses budgeted at nine ninety-nine thousand one hundred and eleven. Today, we have spent one hundred and one thousand seven twenty-six, representing only ten percent. The goal room revenues budgeted at one thirty-eight thousand five hundred. To date, we collected twenty-five thousand two eighty-one, representing only eighteen percent. The goal room expenses is budgeted one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five ninety-nine. We only, we spent forty-three thousand five sixty-five, representing thirty-seven percent. Cash position. To date, the city's cash balance remains sufficient to pay all outstanding bills as they become due. Current bank balance as of March thirtieth. The operating account had nine million five hundred and thirty-one thousand eight oh nine. Forbearance account had seven thousand and seventy-eight. Goal room account had one hundred and twenty thousand three thirty-seven. Block grant had four thousand one ninety-eight. The PG grant had three hundred and fourteen thousand eight sixty-five. We had the auditors earlier today who gave their presentation of the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And please note that a copy of the audit report is already filed to the state legislative auditors. Um, this and the report of the treasurers. If you have any questions, this is a time to present. If I could answer them, I will. If not, I will uh be happy to receive an email where I will respond.
Thank you, Mr. Thor. If anyone have any questions? Okay, next, um, we have the acting chief, um, Felice Jackson's report.
I don't think they're on here.
You know? Okay, with that, um, next is citizens' comments. Do raise your hand. If there any. Doesn't seem to be any citizen comments tonight. Okay, well. Checking with all the council members, if everybody's good. Uh, Councilwoman Reed?
Good.
Uh, Councilman Herring?
Um, let me just say that the um shred event was a, a great success. We gave out, I mean, we shredded over thirty-seven hundred pounds. Um, let me just say that the um shred event was a, a great success. We gave out, I mean, we shredded over thirty-seven hundred pounds of uh documents. We filled up half a truck of donations. As, we had to give away at least a hundred PPs and test kits, so. Um, it was a great success.
Yes, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. And thank all the council members and Public Works and um Michelle Cheek Administration and Victoria, Council Clerk for all their assistance and help. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, Councilman Harrison, good?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm good. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm good too. So with that, this meeting is a turn. Thank you so much, everyone.
Ten oh two.
And thank you for council members for all your help with me getting to this meeting.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.